A very good afternoon, Bhanthis, Venerables, Siyalis, brothers and sisters in the Dhamma. A warm welcome and thank you very much for joining us in this auspicious and Mary Torres sharing of merits ceremony this afternoon. First of all, I would like to express my sincere gratitude and Anumodana to all the donors who have contributed in one way or another towards the support of the power out monasteries through the Central Food Fund and the Ho De Miudana.
Sa du sa du sa du.
We are very fortunate to have invited Siyado Ujanaka Biwamsa to give us an Anumodana talk this afternoon. After that, Siyado Chi will join us in Zoom at about Myanmar time 4:30 PM to lead us in the sharing of merits. We are also very grateful to have four interpreter Bhanthis to join us this afternoon to interpret. They are Bhanthi Nyanu Kamsa, Bhanthi Sudamasara, Bhanthi Pawara Damika and the Bhanthi at Ping Uduin who have so kindly agreed to provide concurrent interpretations in Bahasa Indonesia, Korean, Vietnamese and Chinese.
Sa du sa du sa du.
Also, due to the unstable internet connection in Myanmar, as well as any unforeseen circumstances we may encounter, with an understanding of Anisha, we humbly seek your patience and forgiveness in advance if we encounter difficulties or if we make mistakes in the process of today's session. It is our sincere wish and we have tried our very best to make this an inspiring and happy occasion for everyone. May we all maintain a happy and wholesome mind, understanding that all the merits we have done, including the ones this afternoon, will support us to one day realize the highest bliss of Nipana. So now let us take this time to come down and prepare our minds in order to respectfully receive the Dhamma that Siyado Ujanaka will share with us. Thank you very much, brothers and sisters. Good afternoon, Siyado. Thank you very much for kindly accepting our invitation to give us this Anumodana talk.
Sa du sa du sa du.
So, may we all pay respect to Siyados. First bow. Second bow. Third bow. Siyado, may we now respectfully invite Siyado to give us the three refuges and the five precepts, please.
Andamisayadaw. We would like to request for five precepts. Ahang Bhanthi, Tisaranena Sahapanchasi Lang, Khamangya Zami, Anugahangkatwa, Silangdetha, Me Bhanthi. Dutiyampi, Ahang Bhanthi, Tisaranena Sahapanchasi Lang, Khamangya Zami, Anugahangkatwa, Silangdetha, Me Bhanthi. Tatiyampi, Ahang Bhanthi, Tisaranena Sahapanchasi Lang, Khamangya Zami, Anugahangkatwa, Silangdetha, Me Bhanthi.
Khamangya Zami, Khamangya Zami.
Amah Bhanthi.
Namodassa, Bhagawado, Arahato, Sama Sambuddassa.
Namotassa, Bhagawato, Arahato, Sama Sambuddassa. Namotassa, Bhagawato, Arahato, Sama Sambuddassa. Namotassa, Bhagawato, Arahato, Sama Sambuddassa.
Bodham Srinam Gachami, Dharamam Srinam Gachami, Sanggam Srinam Gachami.
Butthang Sarang Gachami, Khamang Sarang Gachami, Sangkang Sarang Gachami.
Dutiyambe Bodham Srinam Gachami, Dutiyambe Dharamam Srinam Gachami, Dutiyambe Sanggam Srinam Gachami.
Dutiyampi Butthang Sarang Gachami, Dutiyampi Khamang Sarang Gachami, Dutiyampi Sangkang Sarang Gachami.
Dadiyambe Bodham Srinam Gachami, Dadiyambe Dharamam Srinam Gachami, Dadiyambe Sanggam Srinam Gachami.
Tatiyampi Butthang Sarang Gachami, Tatiyampi Khamang Sarang Gachami, Tatiyampi Sangkang Sarang Gachami.
Isarangamannambaribonam.
Amah Bhanthi.
Anadibadda, Vedhamanisekabadam Samadhyami.
Paratipata, Vedhamanisikapadam Samadhyami.
Adhina Dhanavedhamanisekabadam Samadhyami.
Adhina Dhanavedhamanisikapadam Samadhyami.
Musawada, Vedhamanisikapadam Samadhyami.
Musawada, Vedhamanisikapadam Samadhyami.
Surameryamajabamadachanna, Vedhamanisikapadam Samadhyami.
Surameryamajabamadachanna, Vedhamanisikapadam Samadhyami.
Idame Bonyam.
Idangme Punyang.
Asawakaya Waham.
Asawakaya Waham.
Odhu.
Hotu.
Dami Bonyam.
Idangme Punyang.
Nibanasak.
Nibanasak.
Pachayo.
Patsayo.
Odhu.
Hotu.
Sarenena Sahapanchasi Lang, Dharamansalganga Dhuapamadina Sambadita.
Amah Bhanthi, Sa du, Sa du, Sa du.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Siyado. So, may we now humbly and respectfully invite Siyado to start the Dhamma talk, please. And may we also respectfully invite all the interpreter Bhanthis to help with the translation into Mandarin, Korean, Vietnamese and Bahasa Indonesia, please. And may we invite everyone who require interpretation to join the respective language channels, please. Siyado, please.
Okay. Before starting our Anumodana talk, we will bear respect for that by reciting in the namodassa three times. Namodassa, Bhagawado, Arahato, Sama Sambuddassa. Namodassa, Bhagawado.
Namodasa, bhagawado, arahado, sama sambodasa. Namodasa, bhagawado, arahado, sama sambodasa. Okay. We will start Anumodana talk for the donating the food to every path branches. So not just the food, can also say it is a saving the life in the difficult time. So according to Bodhisattva teaching, it is timely donation, timely donation. So every donation can produce that being rich. So because of timely doing, timely donation can be rich, timely. So some people after working hard, after old age, they may be rich. It is not timely, timely being rich. So timely donation can be, can produce such a kind of result. So do we have the further donation? We will learn the way of wisaka's rejoice. How wisaka rejoiced about our merits. So wisaka is the devotee of monastery. The name of monastery donated by her is Phok Parama. Phok Parama. In the eastern side of Savati. Jidawana monastery is in the southern, southern side of Savati. So one time she invited the baku's, Bodha, and together with many baku's. The Bodha accepted. Then she prepared meals, foods. After preparing, she sent a housemate to tell Bodha about their timing. So at that time, the housemate went to the monastery. So at that time, it is raining, heavy rain, so in the whole world. And the Buddha knew that, the Buddha told the baku's, you'll take a bath, another rain. So baku's are taking bath. So the lady saw baku's. So at that time, no go. So coming back from the monastery, report to the wisaka. There are no baku's in the monastery, only ascetics. So at that time, ascetics are, in this way, they can stay. So wisaka understand, understood, oh, it is not ascetic, it would be baku's. Because of taking bath, showering, so happening, so she understand. Again, she sent housemate to say time, to say the time to come. So at that time, baku's are covering clothing inside the monastery to get a heat again. So this is a one of a way to stay after taking a shower. So no baku's outside of monastery, outside of, outside of dwelling in place. So she reported to the wisaka, no baku's. But wisaka understood that, baku's are staying inside. So the housemate didn't see that. So at that time, she sent, at that time, okay, Bodha and baku's came to the wisaka's house. So at that time, wisaka requested Bodha to grant eight kinds of, eight favor, eight reward. So it is blame and, blame and less, so no, no faults. So because of this, the Bodha accepted. What kind of favor, what kind of reward do you want to get? So wisaka told, do the Bodha a kinds of favor. So at that time, the Bodha asked wisaka, what reason do you have for asking me for these eight favors? Number one is rain season robes. She wanted to donate rain season robes. When it is rain, you take bath mainly. So what is the reason why she donate? So nakedness is gross, disgusting, and repulsive. This is the reason wisaka wished to give rain season robes to the sangha for as long as she lives. So very considering about the sangha, like you are. So rain season robes, as she wanted to donate. Wisaka is a very great lady. From younger time, she is rich. After the seven years old, she becomes, became Sotapanna. Also, she has five elephant powers. So in many lives that she has done servicing to the sangha, taking care of sangha. Because of this, she has a lot of glory. So this is a hard consideration about the sangha. Number two, number two is meals that do the newly invited, newly arrived monks. I can do that, you may say guest, guest, why she donate? So the reason she said is not knowing in the streets or where to go for arms of food. Newly arrived monks will get exhausted while walking for arms. So because of newly arrived, we not know streets, we not know where to go. It is happening for the baku's. So if she donate, it will not be so, so won't get exhausted. So because of this, she wanted to donate. So the whole life, she wanted donate. Number three, number three is gamika badda. Meals that do the debating monks, travelers. Why she want to donate? And trying to get a meal, debating monks, may Bodha, the teacher, or teacher may take a responsibility to get a food. They may arrive late at their destination. So if they go without eating, they will be weak while traveling. Because of this, she want to donate. So number four, kilan baddam, meals to the sick monks. Number four, so what is the reason, what is the hard consideration? If the sick monks don't get to develop food, they are illness, may get worse, or they may die. So because of that, that she wanted to donate. So now you donated those baku's, monastics. So they may be newly arrived monks, they can be traveling monks, they can be sick monks. So like a wisaka's consideration you have, it is very good. Number five, number five is kilan baddam, meals to those monks who nuts, the sick. So the one who taking care of sick monks. So why she wanted donate? If the monks who nuts, the sick, have to get their own meals. They will only be able to bring back meals from the sick, for the sick after midday. The sick won't be able to eat. Because a baku only can eat before midday. So if she donate, it will not be so, because of this reason, she wanted to donate. Number six, kilan besitya, medicine, medicine for the sick, for the sick baku's, or for the sick monastic. Why staying, even the sick monks don't get to should develop medicine? Their illness may get worse, or they may die. So because of this reason, she wanted to donate. So now is, now we, we may have a pandemic. So we can aim in this way, you may aim in this way. So it is very considerate, very much a consideration about the baku's sanghars. Now, number seven, do what you go, regular supply of rice. Regular supply of rice. So when the Bodha staying, and that way they got, the Bodha allow the rice of porridge. Because of having ten benefits, because of hearing ten benefits. So the Bodha allow porridge. What are ten benefits of porridge? Because if you come too far, ah, will give a food to you for it. So you need to know the benefits of porridge. So porridge is a long, so long life, you can get a result. Being a long life, go viyarans, or viyara, suka, mental bodily happiness. Balak, strength, energy, padibana, knowledge. Actually, if you donate, receiver can get these events, as I said, the same result. You can also long life, go viyarans, happiness, strength, knowledge. Knowledge is a very dependant energy. So if we don't have energy, even a knowledgeable person, sharp person, so the knowledge will slow down. So by offering porridge, you can get that. And next one is, next of five, can dispel hunger, can dispel hunger, can dispel lust. So can break the wind, the wind can go down, can clean the big intestine, you may say colon. Can digest something undigested food. So altogether, ten benefits from porridge donation you can get. Because of this, by hearing this, this teaching from the Bodha, by understanding Bodhisattva's wish, so she wanted to donate. So you have done a lot of donation of other food, so many places may do for it. So you have done this kind of donation. You can hope this ten benefits, which wisaka will get. So we will move, number eight, baku needs sanghars, sanghars, utakasadikam, utakasadikam. Bathing robes for the sangha of baku needs. Why she wanted to donate? So on occasion, nuns were bathing naked at a, at a fort in the river Achira Wadi, together with prostitutes. The prostitutes made fun of them. Whenever else, when practice the spiritual life, while you are young, why not enjoy bodily pleasure? When you are old, then you can practice the spiritual life. In this way, you will get the benefits of both. Being in poke fun at, fun at, by the prostitute, the nuns were humiliated. Nakedness in woman is gross, disgusting, and rebellusive. This is the reason wisaka wishes to give bathing robes to the sangha of nuns for as long as wisaka lives. So she want to donate nuns in this way. You can also do, if you wish, so there are many sialis. We, although we may not have a baku needs, as I say, or a bodhisattva. So, yeah. So this, we wisaka donated. So at that time, the Bodha asked wisaka, what benefit did you see? What did you ask? That you asked me for these eight favors? So many baku's in different places will come to Savati, you visit to do the Bodha. So if a monk die, other baku's will ask about their destination. So at that time, the Bodha may answer. You should notice that this, after dying, or near to die, as a tradition, baku's may ask what is their states or attainment. Before that, not asking, as a tradition. Some people wanted to ask when we have Dhamma talk. So it means that seem to be near death, in the near death. So it is a tradition, so they have a summary reason, early knowing about their attainment may not be good, life may not be pure. So this is not tradition. So if it die, will ask, or if in the near death, may ask. So at that time, the Bodha may told, may tell baku's, this baku's are stream entry, once returna, nor returna, or arahantas. So at that time, wisaka will ask again, have they visited to the Savati? If yes, oh, this baku, I have done a donation to this baku. Maybe newly arrived, as a newly arrived baku's, maybe as a debating baku's, or maybe as a sick monks, or nursing baku's. He may be accepted, he may be accept my medicines, regular supply, or rainy season clothes. So at that time, I will regard that, I will feel glad. So I feel glad. From gladness, we move to joy. Piti amba moja, piti is a small, small rejoice, ba moja is a much rejoice. So rejoice may cause my body trying to quill, trying to quill is a pasadi in Bali. So when my body is trying to quill, I will feel a bliss, suka, will be happy. So if a happy, happy mind is ready to. Uh so if a happy, happy mind is ready to have concentration. I will have a concentration. So concentration is a kind of factor, one of a controlling faculty. You control our mind. Concentration is a kind of power, samadhi, samadhi power, spiritual power. Concentration is one of the factor, enlightenment affect us or awakening affect us. So because of these benefits. I want to donate these eight favors. So you can be happy in this way.
Cooperate and coordinate support and Dana efforts to various Paau monasteries. An initiative was undertaken by Sister Mila and the various Indonesian organizers to create a platform linking the organizers from different countries. So, the International Paau Support Group was formed, connecting the different organizers from different countries with the local Myanmar team led by Sialipia from Main Paau. So, dear Siao Doji, may I kindly ask for permission now to provide a short summary of the Central Food Fund Dana and the whole day meal Dana, please? Thank you.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. So, with the help of the local team, we have been able to offer and support many Paau monasteries, many of which otherwise we will not have known or are inaccessible to us. So, I'm happy to share that since early September, we have been able to support thirty-eight Paau monasteries, offering two thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven whole-day meal Dana's, filling all the days available to us until the end of this year. So, in other words, all these branches are assured of the daily meals for this year. The total value of Dana offered is approximately four thousand nine hundred and eighty-six legs chats. And then, in late September, in view of the situation in Myanmar, we also undertook another initiative to offer dry food to all the fifty-four Paau monasteries to store in order to ensure food security. The total value of the Dana is approximately four thousand two hundred and twenty-eight legs chats. Through this, we are really grateful to be able to support three thousand eight hundred and seventy Baku Samaneras nuns and yogis who are staying in these monasteries. We are really grateful for the opportunity to offer all this whole-day meal Dana's and dry food to all Paau branches and associated centers. It is our sincere wish that the Sangha may be able to abide with the peace of mind and practice in comfort. May the dispensation of the Buddha last a long time. Sadhu, sadhu, sadhu. So, Siao Doji, with the pandemic and the current situation in Myanmar, it is not possible for us to travel to Myanmar to meet and learn directly from Siao Doji. So, today, we are very, very fortunate to be able to meet Siao Doji online. Maybe not miss this rare opportunity to receive the precious Dhamma teachings from Siao Doji. So, maybe humbly and respectfully invite Siao Doji to give us a Dhamma talk.
Okay, please try. A Dhamma of Nibbana. From Thailand, we visit Namathi.
Maybe, maybe invite Siao Doji to give us more advice, please, because we are also happy to see Siao Doji. No chance to go to Ping Ulin to visit Siao Doji.
Please try to, for a Dhamma of Nibbana, you should come to view.
Siao Doji, we want to go, but now we cannot go. They don't give visa.
If there is any opportunity, you can go.
Okay, sadhu, sadhu, sadhu. Thank you very much, Siao Doji, for the very, very important teaching to really remind us to diligently practice Samatha and Vipassana meditation so that we can attain and realize the Dhamma. Siao Doji, we are very grateful to Siao Doji for reviving the true teachings of the Buddha and for teaching and propagating the right practice that can lead to path and fusion knowledges even in this very life. We are all very grateful to Siao Doji for establishing the Paau Sangha in Myanmar and in many different parts of the world, so that the Buddha's Sasana may take root and prosper for the benefit of many beings around the world. Sadhu, sadhu, sadhu. May we dedicate all the merits that we have accumulated to Siao Doji's good health and long life, and may we humbly wish Siao Doji well and happy always. May Siao Doji always have the right supporting conditions to continue to teach and propagate the true Dhamma for the benefit of all beings in the world, and may all of Siao Doji's noble aspirations be fulfilled. Sadhu, sadhu, sadhu. So now, may we humbly and respectfully request Siao Doji to lead us in the making of aspirations and the sharing of merits, please?
Okay. Ida no bonya.
Ida no bonya.
Nibbana sa.
Nibbana sa.
Nibbana sa.
Bichyo.
Bichyo.
Odhu.
Odhu.
Ida no bonya.
Ida no bonya.
Prabhasadana.
Prabhasadana.
Pajema.
Pajema.
Isama.
Isama.
Bonya baga.
Bonya baga.
Labandu.
Labandu.
Sadhu.
Sadhu, sadhu, sadhu. Okay. Thank you very much, Siao Doji. We are really very happy to be able to see Siao Doji today. Sadhu, sadhu, sadhu. So, once again, may we may with me wish Siao Doji good health, long life, and may all of Siao Doji's aspirations come true, and may we also have the opportunity to go to Ping Ulin to see Siao Doji in person. Sadhu, sadhu, sadhu. So, we are now near the end of today's auspicious ceremony. Thank you very much.
Okay, okay.
Thank you very much, Siao Doji, for so kindly taking time to meet us, giving us the opportunity to offer requisites and giving the precious Dhamma teaching. Please practice Samatha and Vipassana meditation diligently. Okay.
Sadhu.
Sadhu. Maybe now humbly and respectfully pay respect to Siao Doji by bowing three times. First bow. Second bow. Third bow. Okay. Thank you very much, Siao Doji. We hope to be able to see Siao Doji and receives teachings from Siao Doji again very soon. So, may Siao Doji, may Siao Doji, please take care. Sadhu, sadhu, sadhu. So, Siao Doji, sorry for the wait just now. So, Siao Doji, please kindly leave the Zoom at any time that is convenient, and Siao Doji, please kindly take a good rest. Sadhu, sadhu, sadhu. Okay. Most respected Bankees, venerable Sialis brothers and sisters in the Dhamma, we have now come to the end of today's very auspicious and meritorious ceremony. Before we end the session, we would like to invite everyone to join us in making the earnest and sincere wish for the Buddha's Sasana to last a long time. May I humbly offer a short reflection before we do so, please? Now, as we look around us, the pandemic situation and all the problems and instability, we can clearly sense that the darkness of ignorance is increasingly taking a grip on the world around us, and the thunderstorm of lust and hatred is constantly threatening us. Amidst all this, we seek refuge in the omniscient Buddha, the Dhamma, and the virtuous Sangha. Although the Buddha has entered into Mahaparinibbana, he continues to live on in the Dhamma. The Sangha is the guardian and protector of this precious Dhamma. If we support and protect the Sangha and the Dhamma practitioners, they will be able to protect this unbroken lineage that has been passed down from the Lord Buddha through generations of Sangha. And if we continue to support and protect the Sangha now, the Dhamma will continue to live on and prosper for many generations to come. All the support that we have had the opportunity to provide to the Sangha, whether through big or small offerings of requisites, whether through efforts of voluntary service, all our timely support will go to ensure that the Sangha and all the Dhamma practitioners will be able to live the holy life and directly see and realize the Dhamma for themselves. May they in turn be the beacon of light to shine and guide us along the path so that we may one day also directly know and see the Dhamma and penetrate the Four Noble Truths and experience the supreme bliss of Nibbana. Sadhu, sadhu, sadhu. So, let us now sincerely and respectfully recite this three times together. May the Buddha's dispensation last a long time. We can all do this together. Buddha, Sasana, Shira, Titatu. Buddha, Sasana, Shira, Titatu. Buddha, Sasana, Shira, Titatu. Sadhu, sadhu, sadhu. Thank you very much for joining us once again, and also gratitude to the four interpreter Bankees for so kindly providing the interpretation, and may we invite the four interpretation Bankey interpreter Bankees to please turn on the videos so that we can pay respect to you, please. And also, if Bankey Ukon is still here, may Bankey Ukon also please turn on your camera so that we can pay respect to you. Okay. Brothers and sisters in the Dhamma, let us now pay respect to the Bankees. Thank you very much, Bankees, once again. Sadhu, sadhu, sadhu. Thank you. So, Bankees, Bankees, please kindly feel free to leave the Zoom according to your convenience. Thank you very much once again. Sadhu, sadhu, sadhu. Okay, for all the participants who are still with us, thank you very much once again for joining us this evening. May everyone be well and happy, and may all the supreme merits accumulated through the support of the Sangha be the strong supporting condition for our smooth and swift realization of the deathless Nibbana. May all our noble aspirations come true. Sadhu, sadhu, sadhu. And if you would like to, at the beginning, we share some videos about our Central Food Fund Dana as well as meal Dana. You can visit the International Paau Support Group's Facebook page as well as the Indonesian Paau Paau Toya Vipassana Dura Hemetrich Indonesia's YouTube page to see the videos. Thank you very much once again. I wish you a good evening and a happy weekend. Sadhu, sadhu, sadhu. And last but not least, I would like to take this opportunity to say a big thank you and a big mahasadhu anumodana to the Indonesian team, the great Indonesian team for working very, very hard continuously for the past few days to make this event possible today. Sadhu, sadhu, sadhu. Thank you very much, brothers and sisters. Good evening. Sadhu, sadhu, sadhu. Thank you very much, brothers and sisters. Good evening.